Motion carries. Item number one is public comments. And I apologize, last month I let it get into a question and answer session. I'd like to keep it back on just public comments. Does anybody in the public have anything they'd like to say to the board?
Good evening. I'm Don Brander from Lone Rock. I guess my first question is, has the mold issue been solved in this school? And if it has, I would say that means the school in Lone Rock is closed for this year and probably forever. What I'm asking is, do we have a plan for the school in Lone Rock? A six-month plan, a one-year plan, a five-year plan? I have more than a casual interest in this because the only thing that separates my home from the school is Orange Street. And most certainly in the next five years, my property will be up for sale. I just ask, where are we on the plan for the school in Lone Rock?
At this time, it's not really a question and answer session. If you'd like to sit down and set up a meeting, I'd be more than happy to talk with you or anyone on the team.
I'm Dan President. I'd like to respond to that.
It's not a question and answer session.
Well, according to...
To just keep it as public comments.
According to 187, it is, okay? It calls for discussion.
Is there anyone else in the audience who has a public comment?
Are you responding or are you ignoring me at the moment? Okay, then I want to make my comment tonight. That's why I addressed you.
You want to make a comment to me?
I want to make a comment to the body.
Public comments?
Okay.
You want to make a public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
All I'm saying is that Mr. Brander's statement, it actually is very fitting for this, at this time, because we're about to start new school year. What I want to say is that, and I had a discussion with another couple of the board members, that Lone Rock has no intentions of going over and dying and become a backwater community like so many other school, top villages to do that become a victim of consolidation. So my point is, the point is that we need to have, from the administration, a plan for that school. I'd like to see something as soon as possible. So these people that are wondering, because I live much further from that school than Don does. So what I'm saying is, we need a plan from the administration of what they plan on doing with that building. Because, and the only thing that they don't want to see is competition for students. So I think that the village of Lone Rock is ready to say, okay, we're not going to make a school out of that building. But they want to know what's going to happen. They have a lot of things planned, a library, a student center, excuse me, a senior center, and a daycare center, and a number of other things. So they need a plan. And I think, I don't know, how do you feel about that, Dick? Do you think it's time to give a plan? Because it's covered under the referendum facts.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. And they're noted, they are noted. Item, item number two, update on 2017-18 district configuration transition.
Mr. Brander. Well, it's kind of crunch time, so a lot has happened. Still, we have essentially a few items that we're finishing up moving from buildings into classrooms. I know they ran a load today to arena and plain. Some things that I guess were overlooked in the initial move. Teachers have been in their classrooms and have really worked hard at making their new space their own. Buildings are looking great. And so there's just a few odds and ends that are, you know, needing some attention right now. So we're working through those. The grade level teachers have had an opportunity to meet in their new teams already, and each of them have met, so that's an exciting thing. They've worked their way through agendas, talked about norms from which they're going to operate, and started their planning for the year ahead. In both the Early Learning Center and River Valley Elementary, there's plans for their Ready, Set, Go conferences, first day of school, open house at River Valley Elementary. And feeling pretty good about where we're at. So, got new lettering on the building with their name, which is perfect.
Do you feel like the, I know everybody, everybody in the elementary schools had to, well, except for maybe arena, had to move classrooms, right? So make it even...
There were a lucky few that did not.
Oh, there were.
In each of the buildings. There were a few teachers that were already in that building and did that classes.
But...
Two, two in at the Early Learning Center and one over at Edmondson Elementary.
And do you feel, are you feeling like everybody's feeling okay about that? Are they getting, I know I've asked this before, but just continue to check in. Like, are they getting the support that they need? And you feeling like they're feeling pretty, pretty good?
As I have chatted with most of them and attended, there's a couple of the grade level team meetings that I wasn't able to get to. I was just away on a trip and they met, but followed up with their groups. That's what I asked them, how you doing, how you feeling? What can I help with, what do you need? And I think, you know, if they had some needs, then we wrote those down, and that's what we've been working at addressing right now. And, but I think, when I was talking with Andrea Sullivan over here today, and I just said, how you doing? I said, your room looks great. And she's like, yep, feels like home. So, I don't know.
Good.
I'm trying awful hard to meet their needs.
Good.
So doing whatever I can.
I appreciated that on the, it was either the website or the River Valley Facebook page, if you remember, that you had the names and the pictures of all the teachers. It actually helped. So it was helpful for me to see who all those people would be in the building, as well as to be able to show Leona, not only her own teacher, who she had met already, but these are definitely the people. It was really great to already have the pictures up to see.
That was Emily Miller's idea, she was rolling with that. So it's kind of our plan for some of the, you know, kind of school-wide bulletin boards in the buildings to have everyone's picture of them, a little bit about them.
It's great.
Position, yeah, so.
Thank you for doing that.
And I assume if there was any new bus information, or that every, the bus stuff is pretty much as...
When we have registration day.
Yeah, we would have it on the agenda, right?
Yeah, it was given out to people during registration.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, it was provided. I think they have most of it out in the mail at this point in the game. So it's coming along pretty good.
And what we saw last couple of months ago or something is pretty much the deal, right?
Yep.
And we're going to do a dry run with the buses on August 30th, I believe it is, in service. So the aides that are riding buses will get on them at the places that they're going to get on them. We should pretend that there's kids on there, see how it goes.
That's true.
At registration day, there were only positive comments about the busing.
Good.
So when people came up, we were all there, bits and pieces, I was there the whole time. I did not have one negative comment about what they received from lamers, so.
Those guys stayed with there.
Mm-hmm.
I got to meet Bonnie. I heard her, and I knew that's Bonnie, because I come to her for like the first or second one.
So it was all positive.
It was great to have them, so you could ask them versus you having to ask them to tell Karen.
Absolutely.
So that was great, thank you.
What about the enrollment numbers with registration? Some more kids are projected?
I think we're...
I got them right here.
Yeah.
Ninety-nine students at ACES, 120 at the Early Learning Center, and 321 at River Valley Elementary, so.
So we're...
We've had a summer where we've had some kids move in, so it's pretty good.
Thank you, Jamie.
Good.
Item number three.
Before you go, can we, just, is it okay to address the Lone Rock School building under this?
That's what I was wanting to do.
Can I just finish quickly?
Yeah.
Can we make sure we put on the annual meeting an item about, you know, the sale of property? So I guess that would be an option if we come to the hearing.
Has Lone Rock been in touch with you now?
I have reached out a couple of times to speak with the village and nobody's replied.
Nobody's replying?
No.
Well, that, I mean, that's instructive to me that, I mean, I mean, we can assure Lone Rock that the building will be maintained, the grounds are going to be maintained, and, you know, lawns are getting mowed and...
Yeah.
It's not turning into a high source.
Yeah, and I think the same things that Mr. Brander mentioned when he was talking. I've mentioned in email to the clerk at Lone Rock, to people and to work with them. Arena's been very responsive.
So I guess that'd be the first update. And I mean, I, you know, if you or Mr. Brander could encourage those folks to start a dialogue with Tom, you know, that seems like the first steps, and then we can, before we can start talking about it, I just don't, you know. You know what I mean?
Yeah, if there's a plan, I'd like to see what the village is proposing. Because I know, for one, that Mark has been talking to them and not, and has been falling on deaf ears for the last several months. So if they're, if the village is interested in a plan, why don't they present what they would like to see happen with that, with that building, and then we can have a discussion?
Does that make sense, Danz?
I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Well, I think it would be professional suicide to do anything with that building right now. I mean, we do not know if this grand scheme is going to pan out. We need to maintain that building, we need to keep it viable. I'm not saying we shouldn't use it. We should use it as much as possible. But we don't know what's going to happen, so.
No, but, you know, working with the village to, you know, putting a daycare facility, senior meals, utilizing the library, these are things I've outlined in an email that I sent to the clerk in Lone Rock, and in that, I haven't heard back, so.
For the village of Arena, they're going to organize community meetings, so that the community can get together and discuss ideas of what they'd like to pull together and see in their buildings.
And I've been, I'm sorry, I've had multiple conversations with people from the village of Arena, village board members.
And so have I. Again, I haven't heard anything either from the village of Lone Rock either.
So at this time, you have, as far as the school's concerned, you have no plans for the building at this moment, at this time?
Maintain the building.
Just maintain it, but no, no, beyond that, no plans for it.
At this time, no.
Because there's no receptive person to respond to any point. Again, I would say if the village has some thoughts, put it on paper, let's talk about it. But for us to say we have a plan without another partner with that, what's the point?
Okay, the village board meetings are two days before school board meeting. I'll have, I'll have an answer for next meeting, next month's meeting.
Have some board members attend.
I think properly maintaining a building and keeping it in good shape and viable is a plan.
Yes.
I think it is a plan. Now, if there's a better plan, great, you know. I'm all, I'm all for looking at it, yeah.
Yeah, can we also maybe review the, just touch on the procedure for getting something on the agenda? Because it seems like there's frustrate, you know, that there was frustration that Dan didn't really have a place to put that information. So if something wants to go on the agenda, we contact you.
He just needs to contact me or Tom?
You know, put on the agenda, Rick Martin, and then...
Yeah, or anything that you want to have on the agenda.
Like we talked when we were talking the other day, you just need to contact me.
I'll contact officials over there and get them to sit down and formulate.
You usually get the agenda out a week ahead before the meeting, so that's kind of...
Yeah, sure, okay.
What's the clerk's name?
What?
The clerk in the village of Lone Rock?
Karen.
Karen, K?
I'm not sure what her last name is.
Kempin or something?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll just call him.
I guess a double K name.
We'll move on to item number three, CISA number three annual meeting report. Julie Case will provide an update from her attendance at this July meeting.
Yes, I attended the CISA three meeting Thursday the 27th at the CISA three building there in Kalamore. And we were able to hear Jane Nutter, who's the new CISA three agency administrator, spoke. He was, he's really enthusiastic, and I feel that it really, he did a really good job with the different school board representatives, just talking about his plan and desire for us to continue to work with sharing versus competing for resources and things like that. And just overall suggesting different ways that different schools could continue to show their community how much they appreciate and acknowledge the staff, the students, and the community acknowledging them in different ways. So it was nice to be able to share, when we split into groups, different ways that our staff share about the kids, like the SOAR cards and things like that, and just acknowledging the great work of our community and staff and students, and to hear other ideas from the district, the other people in CISA. We were able to fill the Area Three vacant representative space. An Iowa grant person filled that, so both of ours are now filled, which is nice. And we also, CISA had us meet Robert Callahan. They've hired someone for communications and compliance service director. He is a service that they're offering. He will be going in and helping with marketing at different schools, meaning helping schools with their websites, or making sure that things are updated and technology information he's going to do. He's working with two different school districts, two and a half days with each, and it's, they've received enough interest that they're going to hire an additional person in the same capacity for different districts if we're interested in assistance in those areas. So, yeah, it was, it was really nice to meet everyone.
Thank you for attending, Julie.
Yeah, absolutely.
Item number four, board reminders and announcements. This month it's going to be called Board Reminders, Announcements, and Nagings. I would like to address answering emails. I know we're all busy, we all have lots of things going on. That's why it's very important to answer your emails that Paul sends out and other board members send to you. As far as committee meetings, if an alternate needs to attend, we need to know if you're not going to be there or if you are going to be there. It's important. We all have intensely busy schedules. It's disrespectful to not answer on a timely manner, and I think you need to be accountable, not only to the board, but to the people that voted you in, to be responsible for answering your emails on a timely manner. Nagging ended. Next announcement is we have two student reps. Carolyn Nosley and Lauren Knudsen will come on board starting next month. Good job recruiting, Fred.
That was not me.
Will they both look at telepath?
No, they'll probably look at, they're both actively engaged students at River Valley High School, so.
That's important.
And I have one sad announcement. It's not sad to John Novak, but it's sad to me that this is going to be his last regular board meeting. So I just wanted to acknowledge that tonight.
Are we going to take him to the shed?
Wait a minute, is he in the woodshed or?
I don't want to look down there, is he smiling? Does he have a smile? Dan's obviously served our district very, very well over the last four years. We're in much better shape in a number of areas because of his involvement. And he will be tremendously missed.
Here, here, John, do it.
And as good as he brings it, okay?
Yeah. Did you want to address the board?
John, would you want to say something?
Absolutely none.
And John and I met 37 years ago this month. So I've known John for 37 years, which is a long time. And he's, I was able to convince him to come to work here, even knowing what I was like 37 years ago.
Remember you were five.
Remember you were five. Well, that's some points, Larry, sir.
Item number five, legislative update.
Okay, before I get to the legislative updates, I will explain what happened here. I was trying to keep John Novak from retiring, but it didn't work.
He twisted your arm, didn't he?
He did. No, I had a, I had a planned operation to move what I call the funny bone nerve from here to here. It's putting my arm to sleep all the time. And they, they did that, put me under for an hour and a half yesterday. And, yeah, I got the other one coming in this fall.
You feeling okay?
Yeah, it's just a sign of age. Okay. Legislative update. I think folks have been following the fact that there's another disagreement going on in our legislature over the Foxconn incentive. And unfortunately, it's not likely that the Finance Committee will meet again until the third week in August, because this is typically the time when folks are attending conferences or traveling, and so our budget will, our state budget will continue to be later. Additionally, there's quite a bit of disagreement between Assembly and the Senate as to whether the discussions on Foxconn should come first or the budget should be completed before that. So there's going to be a lot of, a lot of punching and slugging coming up for the next month. Let's see. Couple of things that are of interest to us particularly is, first of all, the summer school funding. The Assembly Education Committee is going to be looking at a bill that is sponsored across parties to expand the scope of online summer or interim session classes that qualify for stating. And so these are classes that are either required for graduation or count towards a number of credits that the school board requires for graduation. So on online classes, vocational education, classes for languages, fine arts, other courses that the board would deem appropriate could be, you could see additional funding for them. And Wosby supports that bill very strongly. And the other one that Wosby takes a negative position on is the firearms education course, which is now being proposed as an elective, not mandate. School boards would not be required to offer this class, students would not be required to take it. But if the school district does offer it, the bill would require that it must be taught by a supervised individual who demonstrates proof of training in firearm safety and prohibit the use of live ammunition in such a course. And Wosby is neutral on this at this point, because it's not a mandate, it's simply a suggestion. So I think with that, I'll stop.
You want to roll right into number six?
Sure, sure. This time of year, there's always the opportunity to start thinking about the fall workshop, the governance workshops that start happening. And ours for CISA three is October 12th. Haven't seen too close, but it's coming. So we have an opportunity to attend the workshop that would, if you're interested, especially new to the board, titled Operating Effectively as a Board. And Paul is already calling members of our board for attendance at the Wisconsin Education Conference, so hopefully everybody can, can think about attending for a day or so. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Dick. Action items. Number one, consent agenda. Checks, invoices, receipts, July 2017. Open session meeting minutes, July 13th, 2017. Identifying a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So who?
Second, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, consideration and action on hiring consultant for strategic planning.
Administrator, we had the option, we had the opportunity to talk with two people that were recommended to us to do strategic planning. I think we are in agreement that we would recommend one individual to help lead us in that direction. And I'll provide his name to Kathy, and you guys can decide how you want to go about interacting with him. He's done strategic planning work for many school districts. Comes from the city planning world, regional planning world. And comes very highly recommended, he lives on the West Side in Athens.
Okay, I'd be interested in having him maybe come to our next board meeting. With, I mean, it doesn't have to be a super fancy proposal, but, you know, some sort of like timeline, process, and price.
And you just want the one, yeah. What did the administration like about this one?
This individual is going to provide us more of a product, like a three and five year strategic plan, which is what you wanted. The other individual would work more on the marketing end of the strategic plan. And we may be working with him in the future. I mean, we really kind of saw almost a succession where the first person would help us create a strategic plan, and the second would help engage the communities around it, strategic plan.
Do you think we need to, if we have two, do you, do you think we need two candidates who are, who are strategic planners? I mean, if we've eliminated this one guy as something that we are not looking for, do we still need to, you know, is it still recommended that we find two strategic planning candidates? Are we okay as a group to just talk to this person if we all like him?
I'm okay just talking to the one that, if there's an administrative... Can he, can give us an idea of like, how he'll help us?
I think it would be valuable to talk to this individual. He's worked with many of our neighboring school districts.
Is it appropriate to ask for this individual's name ahead of time so that we might do our own investigation background online? Just help, help me out on the process, if you prefer.
I don't see any reason why it would be inappropriate. His name is Mark Roffers, R-O-F-F-E-R-S. And he has worked with many school districts in and around the Madison area, including some of our neighbors.
I, as a point, I do know Mark, I've worked with him when he was with Bain County. He also was, I've worked with him at VanderWalden, when I lived in the town of Dunn. So he has broad experience that was many, many, many to go. I know him professionally, and he's, he's very qualified. So are you asking us to take action to actually hire him? Or can we do that at the next meeting after we meet?
I think it would be at the next meeting.
Some sort of proposal.
And it might even require two meetings. You know, he might recommend just coming and talking to you at our next meeting and thinking about what, what you're really looking for. He's looked at the work that we did with Mr. Harum. He's looked at our population study. He's looked at the facilities plan from SDS architects. He's looked at some of the work we did in the past around graduate learner outcomes and belief statements. So he's had access to that information already. He's familiar with our school district and kind of has been following us in the news over the last year and a half.
So at this time, we don't need any action, maybe just a direction from the board that Tom invited to our next board meeting yet?
I would add that I think as a board, we need to then also start thinking so that we can have a discussion about the process and how we're going to. I mean, this is not something that we can just do as a 10-minute agenda item on the school board and then need every other month. I mean, I think if we're going to start this process, this is going to take some commitment.
And I'm not sure we all know what this is going to look like.
Right.
Having him at the next meeting will give us a better idea of where we're going.
That's what I would hope you could tell. I mean, that's, those are the three questions I would have him, like, in a, not that this is an interview, but like, to talk to him, I would be interested in timeline, process, and price. So if, it's good for him to know that ahead of time, so he can come prepared for me and what you all want to know.
I would, I would second that, and I would, let's think about process. I don't think it's necessarily appropriate or possible to listen to and speak for candidates and then take a vote. So we have to have potentially an information, piece of information item, and then we have time for this discussion. The same night for...
Well, if he's here, we should be, we're having a discussion. If we're going to do this, we need to stop dragging this out for months and months and months. Either do it or forget it.
We should have a discussion, and we can decide now what our discussion is. Right.
So, are you at like closed session? Like have him present, finish the meeting, then talk about it?
I think, I think that I'm thinking about, we have a discussion with the gentleman. Are we then, is this going to be an action item while he's sitting and standing in front of us? Or are we going to take some time to deliberate at an action item later in the meeting? I think we should just think about that, because it's a big decision. I'm not proposing to put it off.
Right now, this is an action item, but we're not taking any action. So, it could turn out to be the way, excellent tool. We could all turn out to just absolutely like what he's saying and want to make a certain, take a certain direction. But that's what the discussion will be about.
Okay, so it will be an action item.
Doesn't mean we have to take action. Item number three, consideration and action on 2017-18 PSLO Police School Liaison Officer Agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Because are you going to answer your question?
I was going to ask a question. I was wondering if it would be possible to have Officer Andy come and just tell us about how it goes, what he does. Not, I, just as an information thing, not as like determine and vote, but I'd like to hear from his perspective about the relationship.
Absolutely. He works on our district in a variety of ways. And instrumental as we've updated our safety plan on the last year.
I'd like to have him.
Absolutely. I will ask him to do that. I'm sure he'd be happy to actually talk rather than sit here. He comes to a lot of our meetings anyway.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, consideration and action on 2017-18 River Valley School District-St. Luke's Whole Harmless Agreements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion?
This is both of them, right?
So, this is basically, I hold you harmless, you hold me harmless in all ways.
Correct. We, obviously, we share a border, we share facilities periodically back and forth, so playgrounds primarily.
And it says the agreement was made on the 26th of July. And then at the bottom, it's got a July 2016 date.
Good eye! That was why I was raising my hand.
Okay.
Didn't change something when I?
I guess, why is this two agreements and not just one?
I'd have to ask the little council that, I honestly don't know.
Because generally, if there's an agreement, that there's two parties that agree on it, generally it's one.
Right, but it's two different facilities that we're talking about.
I mean, this is, we've been doing this for decades with, but I can find that out for a productive like.
I think it's because there's two different facilities.
Well, we should update the dates.
Correct.
So, I, can I, can I ask for an amendment to the motion that be approved with the correct dates?
Yes.
General, what do you think?
That was my request to John.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
We checked on, my past experience with whole harmless agreements isn't very great, but I was told when I was a teacher and doing the field trip thing and stuff like that, that they aren't really legally binding documents. So, we're just kind of setting the stage and covering our bases. Do we really expect that this is going to leave us?
From a facility's perspective, if someone were to be negligent, an adult acting as parent, then you're always potentially liable. But from a facility's perspective, you're not. So, if a student from St. Luke's broke their arm on a piece of our playground equipment, we'd probably be fine. Now, if one of the teachers was throwing that student into the air into the gym floor, that might be negligence. We wouldn't be fine. I'm just crazy examples, but trying to. It's really just the facility, it's not the actions within the facility that you're holding harmless.
It's not the staff's.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, consideration and action on resolutions accepting gifts.
And once again, we have a series of gifts, and thank our community for being so generous. We have a $500 donation from the River Valley ESS Pop Group towards the purchase of elementary mystery, the elementary mystery science program. We have $100 from Jennifer Kramer to Fund 21 for school supplies. We have a $1,499 donation for football, for the Huddle Sideline Program. A $1,180 donation for boys' basketball uniforms. A $573 donation for football transportation systems for September 8th, the September 8th game. $650 to cross country for video display and clock for the 40th Annual Black Hawk Cross Country Invitational, all from the Athletic Boosters.
And I just wanted to add, Norma and Jesse Loffery stopped in on Tuesday, I believe, and donated a clarinet to the middle school band program that was valued at about $200. So, I wanted to get that added in there.
And again, I say this and I kind of raise through these on a monthly basis, but our community is very generous and supportive of our programs. And we thank, we thank them.
I would entertain a motion to accept the gifts.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Fred.
This is a resolution, so we'll take a roll call. Julie?
Yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Mark?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nine, yes. Motion carries. Item six, consideration and action on resolutions accepting resignations, if any.
I do have, we have any resignations at this time?
Sure, it's a bummer in August.
Item number seven, consideration and action on hirings, if any.
And we do have a hiring summary, Lisa?
We posted for a speech-language pathologist, and we had one resign. And nobody applied, but we were able to find someone who will help us out for a year, who's a speech-language pathologist, 20 years' experience, at 60%, so not full-time. So, with some of the others, some of the students will have to use some online therapy and do some creative things with their programming, but I think it's going to go well.
And the hiring summary is in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, consideration and action on academic and career planning document.
And I'm going to ask Mr. Crye to provide an overview of the ACP document.
I hope that the memo helps you understand, this is just a new approval you have to do on an annual basis. It's required by statute, and we have some, some of them are vague requirements we have to fulfill starting this year. At the high school level, they've been doing career cruising and academic career planning for a couple of years now, correct? So, we're just kind of sliding in, and we're asking you to approve the plan that's on our website, so. The one part of the plan I want to make a note of is, if you click on it, it's the very, very last part. A lot of schools that academic career plan falls in the counselors and CTE areas, career tech ed. We talked, Lisa and I started talking this spring about including all of our teachers. So, the very, very last part about connecting students with all of our staff through homerooms and Black Hawk period, that's still, that's not in the implementation phase yet, that's still the planning phase. We're still talking about how we're going to do that administratively, so.
So, do you, do we have, I read through it, and do we have any goals? Are there goals, is there a sheet of like what we're hoping to? Because I think, I think a plan is great, but I tried to look at it from an action point. And, I mean, are there, are there goals and measurements?
It's more of a requirement piece from the state. So, we're required to do certain things, and we're fulfilling those by having this plan in place. And the goal would be to, if you read through it.
Facilitate the college and career readiness of all of our high schools and middle schools.
In regards to goals, there's, in the career cruising program, each student has an individual plan that breaks down their transition, whether it's the world of work, or post-secondary options, things like that. So, it's all right there, and they have checkmarks from the time they're freshmen. When they come into the high school, we start really going over all those different things. And as they go, they have to show at the end that it's all taken care of. And what we do at the high school is provide tons of opportunities for them to get a lot of those things taken care of. And we're actually ahead of the game, we've highlighted a program with, whether it's College and Career Day and things like that. So, we're actually doing well on that, so, and by law, all of our students have to be college and career ready by the time they graduate. And that, that program, career cruising, actually makes sure that we're accountable for each student individually, so.
No, and you are. I mean, you've got, our tech program and career readiness is, like you said, we're doing above and beyond. My question was not so much to like see what you're doing in a, like, let's see what you're doing, but to actually like put down in paper and make sure that you receive credit for all of the work that we actually do. By doc, like to write down what we're doing, we also can measure it and get credit for things that we often just say, like, we do a great job. But I think it's important that we are as transparent as possible with parents, and that our parents, our students, and our community all see how much is offered, the level of things offered, and so.
Wouldn't this be writing it down? I mean, isn't that what this is?
Well, one of the things.
What are you thinking of?
Well, my thought is, like, with the level of things that you are doing, is there, have we, and maybe you are already, but I mean, DPI has the Wisconsin Employability Skills Certificate. Like, the level of stuff that I understand we do pretty much fall within most of this already, easily. And it's something that we can also then say, like, these students have these certificates, they have actually left, and we are. Because you are, you're right, you're ahead of the curve in all these capacities. Is can we make them even more ready and receive more of the credit our district and our staff deserve, and our community, that, you know, you had a list of different companies and things that we work with by involving this additional DPI step of a certificate for the kids?
Is that the Employability Skills Co-op Program?
Well, it's the certificate that they, you can do it through that program.
Yep.
But yeah.
Which I believe we do through our, through Ms. Graffender and Ms. Radell and Ms. Carmody. They oversee kids every year with our School to Work program. And we award those in May, where we invite their sponsors and the kids. And it's a, it's a pretty awesome event. I'll make sure I invite you guys next year to the, I know.
It's nice.
It's really, really nice, so.
It's nice to recognize not only the students and the work they've done, but the employers that have provided the experience for those kids. And, you know, out of CISA III, we work closely with Tom Martin in that program. And I think we've got more kids out working than any other district in CISA III. So, you know, I.
Yeah. And they mentioned we're like the model school for the rest of CISA III as far as School to Work goes, which is awesome. And that's a credit to Heidi and Sherry and Carlos, so.
You have a strong team. I just want to make sure that the students receive the, a state noticed, you know, accreditation that might help them with employment, and your staff receive the acknowledgement for the work that they're doing as much as possible. Because like you said, you have it, but is the state recognizing it? Having CISA III say you guys are the role model is not getting the recognition that everyone deserves.
Are you saying we are doing this?
You know, I don't do, are we giving out that state certificate? Or was there a reason that Heidi didn't? I can't remember the conversation.
I'll look into that. I mean, I know we get, we do get money for kids that qualify through, I believe it's this program. They designated originally $1,000 for kids that completed these certificate programs. And I submit documents, or I did this year. And then they get reviewed, and we get the money a whole year later. So, I'll look into the Employability Skills Certificate.
Yeah, that would be great. And just overall, I'm just more curious about if, I'm sure your staff have more of a detailed plans, but you know, like, some of these, it would just, I'm curious about more information on them. And then for our website, and I'm not sure whose responsibility it is, but our academic and career planning, NPI 26, website page links to a 1996 version of the DPI state law instead of the 2013. What was that?
I think it's 13.
Yeah.
When you click, when you see the cut and paste. No, no, I understand, but if you go, it references right here. It says the requirements are here.
I understand that it's bold, but.
Yeah, but it's been updated in, as far as what we access for our parents, that if we could, yeah.
I'll change that, yeah.
That's my mind.
Yeah, that's why we, and that's the old policy. We just deleted the education for employment one, so I'll make sure I update that link.
Thank you.
So, we need to approve this document tonight.
In will on an annual basis, I'm not lying.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, consideration and action on Policy Committee recommendations. For, for second reading, we have 185, and 185 the rule is about Board committees and appointments. We had no changes from the first reading, and basically, we just updated the Board committees. So, I entertain a motion to bring those to the Board for a second reading.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We had student records for first reading the rule and the exhibits. Basically, we just updated it according to the Wosby Quick Check. And we just had one question. Student directory data is data that authorizes schools to disclose a limited amount of information without the parents first obtaining written consent, like pictures to go on the yearbook, you know, things like that. Parents do have the option if they don't want to disclose this data. But what our question was at the Policy Committee is that MATC can call and ask for this information, and we are required to give them this information. And also, military can call and get this information. But in our policy, all we list is MATC. So, our question was, should we include listing that MATC and the military should get this data? Or is there some reason to not list military in there? We didn't, we didn't come to a conclusion at the Policy Meeting, and so we were just going to get your thoughts at this meeting.
Can, can parents opt out?
You can opt out.
Opt out to that?
You can opt out of.
Okay, then maybe it should be in there so parents know that that's somebody that's, could be getting that information if they want to opt out.
They send a new notice, you could use it for Megan, just Megan's in the papers.
Constantly asking. But so we thought we should include this in the policy. We just didn't come to a conclusion at the Policy Meeting, so that's, we got some more clarification from some of our guidance counselors later, so.
Did Megan say any other requests? I mean, it's MATC and military, what do you mean?
No, not to me, she said.
I didn't ask.
I did.
Oh, you did.
Yeah, and she said she was curious too, why we didn't list military. As long as we have MATC in there, we, I think we should put military recruiters as well, so.
Do we have a common thread of who does ask for information? Like, do we have, you know, we talked about scholarships, colleges, different professions? Because when I look through the student directory, and I've, you know, been taking it over since the Policy Meeting, I feel that the way it's worded with the please list below the name of any groups to which you would not like information to be released, I'd like to see it more empowering to parents as, I don't know who the list is that might get it otherwise, so listing all the ones that I don't want them to have. Like, if we could at least list categories, like retail or.
We'll bring that up at the next Policy Meeting. I think that's more appropriate, I think, also some of that.
Sure.
It's just that when. It's just that when we approve these for a first reading, we approve these with this question that we wanted to discuss.
Okay, so this is not up then as an action, I don't mean.
Yeah, it is. We can approve them as a first reading and I know both are, we'll talk about it again.
Okay, I just wanted.
At the committee level.
I think your point is very well taken. We've struggled with this for years.
Yeah.
It does require some thought, some thought.
Thank you.
And I'd have to work with the high school guidance counselors, but I would, like I say, we'd have to work with the high school guidance counselors. They're the ones that are responding to ninety-nine percent of this information.
It's a good point. We'll just talk about.
I'm, I'm not against that though. I think it's a great idea, but you just have, this everybody's aware, you have to be careful that you don't label everything too much. And I'm not trying to sound like I don't want to take care of our families and stuff like that, but you can also, if you get too specific, it can limit opportunities for students because sometimes, you know, there's certain scholarships or certain, and they want certain information. So it just, it gets to be a little tricky. I think we can find a healthy balance, but just sort of runs aware of that as we move forward. I'll be at the next policy meeting as well. We'll discuss that.
So I would enter, with that discussion, I would entertain a motion to bring those to the board for first reading with that change of adding military recruiters.
Make that a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, consideration and action on school forest buildings and grounds committee recommendations.
Mark, is that Stroh?
Do you have a hand with that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm the new chairman of the School Forest and Building and Grounds Committee. And we had a meeting on Monday and we had a gentleman come from AIS Engineering and talk to us about the middle school building envelope and H V A C study and recommendations. It was a draft proposal. He promised us that he would have the final one by September. I'll keep my personal comments out of it, but it wasn't, I don't know, it left me uncomfortable. There's a lot of questions and not a lot of answers. And I don't see a lot of evidence. And I was kind of hoping for maybe we'd have something a little bit.
A little more direction.
A little more thorough. And I, if any of you guys that were at that meeting want to jump in, that was just my personal opinion. I, I wasn't too happy with, with the presentation and.
Well, yeah. I would agree with you, Stroh, that the presenter wasn't very strong, but I think some of the, the main message is for dealing with humidity issues, we need to do a better job. And I think this was pointed out in the initial presentation by the same gentleman that we need to do a better job of balancing our load and having our equipment run longer to control humidity. Yeah, the second piece of that is the retain, retention of heat in the building wood, especially on the outside walls for the north and west sides of the building. There's going to have to be something to address insulation.
So from what I understand, he didn't give a final report.
It was, there was still some executive summary and some other pieces that were missing.
We, we asked a lot of questions and it just seemed like every question was, well, yeah, you can do that, but it's not going to help you out much. Do you agree with that or?
Right, I think the main focus in what he was seeing, especially with the, the air condition suctions of the, the building here, is that we have, he has some good equipment and it's lasted a long time, but it was kind of, it wasn't engineered.
Right.
Let's say, to work as a holistic system, it was kind of recommendations made at the time, how do we deal with this situation? And then the equipment was, was placed in.
It was contractor driven, not engineer driven.
Right.
So.
I think that the ultimate end of that is we need to have a better engineering of the H V A C and then contract feedback on how that's all going to work. So we don't have a system. We have systems that cycle very frequently and we don't control the humidity.
I might jump in. The reason why it's appropriate for him to bring this to fruition is because every option's expensive. You have any payback time and well, the law will be long gone. So we've got to make a good decision. We have, we have an issue that we need to take care of and understand what that issue is in generalities, but we need him to pull things together. And I, I, boy, he, he's, he takes his time.
I apologize for missing that meeting. I might have been able to ask you some questions. Was he, was he commenting on two things, on a, on a upgrade to repair the heating system or was he commenting on the mold? Because they, they are tied together.
I'm, I'm just curious, because we didn't get a final report, is this a discussion that would be better at the committee level?
Right.
Because you have good questions. They're detailed questions, but we don't have a final report. We don't have a direction to go on right now.
I think we should wait till September, look at this very closely and then try to see if, what our options are. I, you know, and your input would be greatly appreciated.
Sarah, is there a, I mean, are we talking about that we are not going to trust this guy's conclusions and we may need to.
No, not, not at all.
He's just dragging his feet.
I was frustrated that he, in my mind, he, he couldn't provide us with any kind of concrete answers. And again, it's a draft, but.
So he's. Okay. So we'll have more of a conversation.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
And moving on quickly, Rick Ferguson gave us a, a dasher report and as usual, they're scrambling like crazy to try to get things ready. I was surprised to hear that we had three custodians go down, but he said he, they were hiring one and that they could get, get it done. And I think that they will. James gave us a little update on Alice training and we had a good discussion about Alice training and whether or not, how many times maybe we should do that, whether or not the kids should be involved. But I think we concluded that the teachers are going to start the process and with some in-service training. I think it's important, but that's just me.
I think we were also wanting to get some feedback from the other court members as we go forward with this. I mean, many districts are implementing the training. Generally, there's in-service training for staff, but there are some, if you could say, live exercises. One would be more of any service day where staff basically go through the process and a lockdown is, is initiated. Everybody locks their rooms up. It kind of, you know, doesn't exercise of it. There's also a tabletop exercise. And some districts have done it with, with the student body, but as more of a just a help, a lockdown procedure, not making it the.
Specific.
Yeah, more specific, but it's, it's basically just.
Shelter.
Shelter in place. And that, and that has to be said, that that can be applied and I'll look to the principals too, could be applied for a host of situations. It's, this is, I mean, Alice is one piece of it, but there, throughout the school year, there are lockdown procedures done because of various situations. And I think that having our staff well educated on it and at least having the kids acknowledged when the teacher tells them to do something, that they know where, where to go when the teacher tells them to do it, there's some value in that, regardless if it's a severe weather or if it's because of, who knows what, something happening outside, whether it be just debris or who knows.
And James also gave us a little bit of an update on contact that he may, or he was contacted by the Drupless Area Land Conservancy about a trail that they're working on from down towards the Taliesin area, across the river and up through our school forests and maybe coming as far as here. After discussion, we kind of all agreed that we were going to let them take the lead on that. We were just going to be there for logistical support and, and so I gave my number to him and he's going to contact those folks. And as far as the school forest subcommittee, we're going to spend this winter looking at our school forests, continue to look at our school forests and the need for maybe a prescribed thinning, but other than that, no, no activity on that.
Okay. Item eleven, consideration and action on employee relations committee recommendations.
We had a meeting last night and had two recommendations that we sent to the budget committee for the teaching overloads and the extended patricase. So the budget committee dealt with those and after that, we have nothing to report.
Great, thank you, John. Item twelve, consideration and action on budget committee recommendations.
First of all, we have had a discussion about the middle school building envelope and H V A C study also. Nothing too extensive because you guys didn't have anything to really give us, but we did, we are recommending to, that the board approve of middle school entryway like we did at the high school. They have an estimated cost of somewhere under twenty thousand dollars to do it. And so we're recommending that to the full board that we proceed with that without fund balance, correct? And then they're also at that time, take a look at the elementary school over here and the early learning center as to what can be done there and, and get some prices for down the road.
So at this point, you made a motion?
Yep.
For the middle school?
For the middle school entry project.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I just want to clarify that Dan said from the fund balance, it's not going to require the energy exemption.
The reason for that is because of the percentage that we have to pay.
Right, we discussed that seventeen percent.
Yes.
So.
John built that into the budget, so it's not necessarily coming out of fund balance unless there's final budget numbers worth being tweaked.
Right.
So that's kind of unknown, but hopefully not.
So it is funded.
It is funded. It's built into the.
I forgot that.
Based, based on some of the government decisions for.
Depends what happens with the state budget.
Who knows?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we had a discussion about the proposed overload through Spanish program in the middle school. And they're still looking to hire someone. They have, they're pursuing a couple candidates that have applied, but because that overload is, is covered in our employee handbook, we didn't have to take action on it. It's already spelled out in the handbook as to how they handle an overload. And so it was more of an information item that it's going to happen.
Is that a hire?
Are you?
A hire?
No, no.
Shifting of.
We're have, help me out with who the.
James can.
James can explain.
The current plan is to have the high school Spanish teachers teach middle school Spanish here for eighth grade and seventh grade, along with Laura Sebold, our E S L teacher, teaching a few sections of that as well. But I recently received some applications for the Spanish position over weekend, so I'm looking at those applicants. May have one person come in for an interview next week. So it's still kind of up in the air, but the, the positions are covered with our Spanish teachers with an overload situation right now.
We had zero applicants for two months, just so you're aware. And then all of a sudden, there were two or three that were, that showed up a week ago.
And then the next item, we had a discussion about the contracts, the extended contract days for high school guidance counselors. And they come in during the summer months and, and do some, when we have requests for college transcripts for our students or we have a new student move into the district and they need to come in and help with their registration and get them signed up for classes and things. And so the, the recommendation from the budget committee is that we extend our guidance counselors' contracts from one ninety to two hundred and three days. And that won't start until next, actually, the extension will be for next summer, not this year.
But we rewrite their contracts pending your decision tonight.
And then it would be based on, because we had the situation this year where one of them was doing more of the work because of a paternity leave for one of them. And so we're going to, you know, just kind of evaluate who, who's doing the work and who gets the, but this was the easiest way was to extend their contracts.
So we're extending this year's contract?
This, well, it'd be.
Well, the seventeen eighteen.
Seventeen eighteen, starting with the new contract that started July first.
Right.
But won't take effect until the summer of two thousand eighteen for the extended contract for that.
The extra days.
The extra days won't start until next, next, next summer.
We're rewriting their contract now, but basically this summer is over.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So, and they had a, they, they've had extended contracts in the past and the extended contracts were inadequate compared to our neighbors. So.
So we need a motion for an extended contract days for the high school counselors. Do we need to stay for how many days?
It's thirteen days.
Well, yeah, two hundred and three days.
Yeah.
I will, I make a motion to extend it thirteen days.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And just one, a heads up on, Brian is researching the resurfacing of the high school track and, and he's going to bring his information to, to building and grounds. But there's, the cracks are becoming not fixable.
Small kids.
On a short-term basis, they, it needs some major work. So he's going to bring that, so that's just, it was just something we talked about and we're going to let the building and grounds deal with the information he gathers. And finally, we had a talk about the preliminary budget for two thousand seventeen eighteen and a motion to approve that preliminary budget and forward it to the full board for approval. And I, John or.
We'd like that motion because we, we need to continue to pair those. So it's important that you approve the preliminary budget. It is in the budget packet, if you'd like to look at that. The summary sheet, I believe, is the last item in the budget packet. That's the sheet that you're most familiar with looking at.
And it's again preliminary because the state hasn't.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen eighteen preliminary budget.
I'll second.
You, you'll, you'll make that motion?
Yes, I'll make that. I thought you just.
I thought, I thought that was the motion and it was.
I was entertaining it. Any further discussion?
I would just ask if there's.
With a second?
Yeah. Is there any points, notable points that, you know, just, just.
Yeah, probably, probably the biggest thing is the budget is based on the governor's budget that at one time looked like they had reached somewhat of an agreement on, and that's the per pupil categorical aid increasing by two fifty, so it would go from two hundred to four fifty. And then the next year, it would go up to six fifty-four and then it would stay at six fifty-four. At least in the forecast, we're leaving it at the six fifty-four for the remainder of those years. Obviously, when the biennial budget comes up in two years, they would probably negotiate that number again, but that would be the best information. So as far as revenue goes, that's what we're basing that on. We're looking at a little bit of increase in our state equalization aid. There's a tax levy sheet out there that'll show you that our tax levy is projected to go down. I think it was ten point seven five mils down to ten point oh seven.
Correct.
That is based on estimates on our equalization aid going up by two point three percent. And again, that's kind of based on the average that we've seen and what we're projecting statewide. That could go one way or the other, but we're just using the best numbers that we have right now. Other than that, it's, it's very much the items that we've talked about throughout our forecast, throughout the spring year with different things that we've moved around, positions that have been reduced, enforced, and some of the changes that we've had from employees either retiring or leaving and the new hires that we've had. And Bridgette and I will continue to work on some of those things as some of our staff still is changing and as we're hiring. Should we end up with a Spanish teacher on an overload, we work something like that into there. And the final budget probably would not be approved until the end of the meeting shortly after.
Hopefully.
So.
All, any further discussion?
We have a motion, right?
We have a motion, a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then just as a final note, we had discussed about setting some of our committee meetings on a specific day of the month. And so budget committee is planning to meet on the first Monday of every month. However, September falls on Labor Day. So we're meeting in September, we will be meeting at four thirty here in the middle school on Monday, September eleventh. We're going to try to, try to hold our budget committee meetings on a specific, instead of trying to hold them right before the meeting and scramble through everything.
Thank you, John. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I got to ask a question. We were, we were talking about the H V A C.
With the, with the budget?
No, well, it just, yeah, yeah, it was part of budget. No, no, it wasn't, I'm, I'm sorry. It was, we just skipped over here. It was actually, I thought it was redundant, we had H V A C for the middle school twice in there. But my question simply is, part, I'm, part of this building is air-conditioned and part's not, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I noticed, since we've been in here, the air conditioning unit has, did not cycle off once. But I mean, I noticed that door open.
Yeah, it's a problem. I shut that one.
That door should be, should have the stops removed and either, it could be keep door closed, sign on it, more specifically to put automatic closes on it, but that should be closed.
In general, we try to keep them closed, except during this meeting because I don't want to appear to be keeping people out.
I've heard it shut down.
Yeah, I've heard it cycling off.
Well, you know, I can't hear very well.
Right.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Fred?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.